All right, we move to roll call. Or excuse me, call the, call the meeting to order.
Call the order.
Oh, Hannah Bassett?
Here.
Mike Mackey?
President.
Barb McRae?
In.
Whitney Baxter?
Here.
Riley Harper?
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda as presented and amended.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Eyes have it. We'll now open up board of public comment. Any public comments?
Can we talk about the garbage?
You could.
Okay, so I believe the six of you owe it to the population of Cambridge to get the best deal on the garbage we can get. Now, in my opinion, it's fine that we rebid it, but I'm gonna take a leap of faith and assume you people know what you're doing to get us the best deal. So that's my, oh, am I understanding that if I can't just drop my garbage focus and go outside that you passed in an audit saying even if I get it from somebody's house, you're still in charge of it?
Yep.
Okay, so if I have two cans and go back to one can, do you have an ordinance that said if I can't get another can from somebody else and save myself the extra four dollars you charge me per can?
This is the public comment section. So how the public comment section is you can speak how you want. We don't, th- this isn't a discussion right now for us.
Okay, so I mentioned what I wanted to say.
Okay.
And you do what you want to do.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so can I, can I ask questions?
Nah, not right now.
Okay, thank you.
That's fair.
That was short. I'll, I'll open that up. I mean, I agree. I, I don't know what the exact driver situation is. I know it's up for renewal and haven't heard any discussion of having it out for bid, especially with the rise in gas prices. You would think that the hometown people would be able to knock some money off there, maybe even have a little bit of a buffer for stuff. I, I'm just guessing. I mean, I think it's, it's worth considering having it up for, for bid. You'd think it would be competitive. My opinion. I, I would think that that would be in best interest of the public to get the best deal. So I guess I, I kind of agree with that.
So, um, I, I, I'm Anne Taylor, for those of you that don't know me, and I'm one of the people that helps coordinate the holiday vendor, vendor and craft fair every year here, and I just wanted to come and ask the, the council to consider maybe adjusting the price or, or working with us on, on the fair this year. So in the past, I just, first I want to be clear on, because I think there was some confusion by some of the council members on where the funds go that get collected from the vendors. And so I just wanted to be, make it clear to everybody that the people that help coordinate that and or the organizations don't take any of that money. What's been done in the past is, um, the first few years, the money was donated back to the city and the tables, the, the long tables is what was purchased with that money. And then the last two years, the money has been contributed back to the, to the firemen to be used with, to help with offsetting the costs for the Christmas Santa gifts. Um, so when I called to, with the reserve this year, what I was told was with the new pricing, so generally speaking, what we do is we reserve from Friday at like between four and five in the evening until Saturday at three to four. And that gives us time to get the table set up. Those of us that are helping to organize it, because we set up all the tables, we put people's names on it, and then we allow the vendors to come in between five and seven if they want to that night to set up. And then, or they could come the next morning at seven thirty, and then the vendor fair goes from nine to two. And I would say that the last couple of years have brought in a lot of people into Cambridge, you know, people both from Cambridge and outside of Cambridge. And I think it's a really good thing that, that it's become kind of very popular. And up till this year, we charged ten dollars per table. The thought was that we were gonna up that to twenty. I feel like that's still reasonable. But then what I was told was with the new way that the rates are, are done through the city, we would be charged three hundred dollars per day, so it would be six hundred dollars total for renting for that. And so basically, what that would mean is we would be in the hole. And somebody would have to come up with that two hundred or a hundred dollars difference. And so I would like to, and I don't know when this should be talked about or not, that the, the council to consider either letting us, since it's a twenty-four hour period, make it three hundred dollars instead of the six hundred, which then I think we would still be good as far as being able to cover that and still make a donation and/or maybe partner with us to, you know, maybe some of the council members who want to do it in, when it's part of the city, and the city takes all of that money or, or something like that. Because if, if it's gonna be as it stands now, it'll be six hundred dollars. I've talked to the other people that coordinated and I, we, we, we just would decline doing that this year, so. I don't know when that discussion would happen.
Yeah.
Yes. I asked you to put on an agenda and then I was told that my time is talking now, so.
Yeah. Or maybe even just request to get with a couple of his council members throughout the week, we could sit down with you and discuss it.
Because I think we need to make a decision whether it's gonna be a go or no go here in the next week or two.
Okay.
Do you wanna let me know who, who I should get with?
Okay. Is there any further discussion, public comments?
I have. Um, so we had a water leak last month and we got our water. It was six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, and we're proposing that the sewer gets taken off because the water didn't actually go to the sewers in our backyard. Um, so I just wanted to bring that forth, and I was told to come tonight. It's to the pump in our backyard by the building, so we didn't notice it right away. We haven't had it turned on all year recently, so. We turned it on and called a plumber. But yeah, we have a little wet pit.
I would say the same for that, too. Good. Are there other public comments? All right, closing public comments. Moving on to public hearing, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by adding a new section to the animal protection and control chapters to allow domestic chickens. All entertaining motion?
Okay.
Let's go to the open public hearing room.
So.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Moving on to the approval of the first reading of the ordinance number twenty-three dash A in ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by adding a new section to the animal protection and control chapter to allow domestic chickens.
We'll do a roll call vote. Bassett?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
McRae?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harper?
No. I'm sorry. No.
All right, moving on to the public hearing. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to solid waste collection fees. Is there any? Any comments? Let me go over that. I just wanted to say, we checked into that and we don't have to put it out for bids if all councils in agreeance for it with the, with the, with the contract. That's what it is. Check with the attorney and and everybody else, and we had a work session on it. So the council, how the council reads, the council is the voice of the city. So this is your voice sitting up here. I, I don't know why it's funny, but.
It's funny.
It's funny.
It should be up in people.
This is your people. This right here is your people speaking for the city right now.
You should listen to it.
You should talk to one of these council members is what you should do. I don't have a vote.
Exactly. I should have been talking to my.
Well, that's not my fault. That's your fault.
That's my fault.
Absolutely.
Well, and if I could give a historical context to this so that you understand that it's not a railroad. Um, the last cycle where we made the same decision, we did open it up for this. And Agne sanitation was able to clearly provide a better service at a more affordable price. So there's a degree of loyalty that we're acting on with Agne sanitation. They provide a service that we know that we can rely on. We don't have problems with them. They have a wide range of services so that people might be doing revivals or have a greater trash need and need to have roll-off services. All that stuff is outlined for us in the, in the contract that we're looking at tonight. So it's, it's not that we're blindly excluding any other possibility. It was something that was looked into the last cycle. It was not looked into this cycle. And, and from my perspective, it was a matter of loyalty towards Agne sanitation because no complaint. They, they do a good job. They pick the stuff up. You don't have trash like that.
Okay, guys. I, I agree with you. The young man picks my garbage up, does it springs in top. Very happy with that. Very happy with them. I'm just not happy with the markup of them viewed to me.
It's a three percent increase. Tell me where you're gonna find anything.
Whatever they charge you. So I have two cans and that's eight dollars.
It's a three percent increase is what we raised it. So tell me anywhere that's not raising or under three percent.
I'm disappointed in what you mark it up from them.
We raised it three percent.
But you're dealing with, they charge you an extra amount. You take that extra amount and you add four dollars to it.
I'm sorry, that's incorrect. That's not what Agne sanitation charges us per can at each red event. It is not twelve dollars.
No, I didn't say twelve dollars. It's four dollars per can.
No.
You, okay, we called them and they told us what they would charge us, pick the garbage up. So when I look at my bill, there's four dollars per can difference. Now, Brandon, we researched this two and a half months ago. So it couldn't have changed, but we called them. They told us what they would charge us as an individual. I look at the bill, you're marking it up four dollars per can.
We, we don't get charged four dollars per can by Agne sanitation is what I'm trying to explain to you.
No, you charged me that four dollars.
No.
So is this contract with them open to the public to see?
Absolutely.
Well, I walk in tomorrow, you will show me this contract, and then I can get a piece of mine. That, could you buy it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Then I'm really content.
I'm open to show whatever you're asking about. If we have it, you wanna see it?
I do.
That's, that's fine.
That, I have no complaint against them. They're excellent. They're on timely, good service. But if you put extra out, they take it. I've never been charged any more for that.
They, they're charging more now because the landfill is charging them, so they're, so that they don't have to eat the cost. It is put on the resident. That's in the contract. Actually, they were just being, you saved a lot of money in the past, but they didn't charge you. When it's in the contract, they were supposed to be charging you for every additional item that was out on top of your can.
Well, if I understand, oh, on top of the can? I understood when I signed up, I could have one can with an extra bag next to it and another can with an extra bag next to it. Is that true?
That's my understanding, yes, but they say like if people don't break down boxes, then that's a charge. If there's shutters, if there's something to that effect, if you can break it down and put it in your garbage can, I'd have lots of conversations with Agne sanitation on how they do their charges. And yes, we're getting tremendous bills right now with what they're charging people extra for every extra item that they're putting out at their garbage dumpster. And that's ten dollars.
I can't speak to that because they, nobody knows what they're charging. Actually, I don't break the boxes down, but I will.
Yeah, that's what they've been doing. That's the new thing because the landfill is charging them more money.
And honestly, the, the reading of the contract said that the, the increase of three percent is not to increase more than three percent. So it's been the history that there have been times where they've only increased it one percent, sometimes two percent. But they put it in there to make sure that they never exceed three percent in the timeframe that we're setting it up.
Well, I think three percent is fair. And that's not what I'm complaining about. I'm complaining about the markup.
The city's not making money. As you just said, we've been eating all these fees that everybody that's been piling stuff outside of their trash cans, it's been charged to the city and stuff. So if anything, the city's been covering people's bills. There is no markup. We're not making money off the trash. We raised it to three percent that Agne sanitation charged us so that we're not losing money. So your tax dollars are not going to lose their money. So I don't know this four dollar markup. So.
Well, it's easy to see markup, but as you explain it, things I haven't got charged for what actually is, and you're eating it. Now that we're aware of that, it makes a lot more sense.
Lost stuff there for exactly where we are.
Yeah, where are we in the public hearing?
Yeah, we discovered that Cambridge never raised the rates for two years. That three percent never did. So everybody for two years has had the same rate. But Cambridge is actually paying more. You're gonna see more in garbage. Everybody is. Any other comments? Discussion?
Is, is this a time for like a public discussion?
Yep.
No.
No.
This is talking hearing.
Yep.
Okay, now, no, no questions about trash. You missed the public's comment.
Gotcha. Yeah. They just gave you the.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, entertaining motion? To close, to close the hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that Whitney or Taylor that's?
Taylor.
All, all opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Entertaining motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance number twenty-three dash B and ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Cambridge, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to solid waste collection fees.
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Roll call Bassett?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
McRae?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to business items. Approval resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen to approve purchase of meter reader implementation and annual fee for simple city utility software program.
I'm making a note for my agenda. Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Approval resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen to approve rate increase for Cambridge community center rental rates.
I make a motion, wait for a minute.
Second.
Who's that, Mackey?
Mackey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Eyes have it. All right, moving on, city ordinance code updates. And I think overlooking here is for a couple volunteers to start going through the code book a couple chapters at a time working through it, seeing what needs to be updated, changed.
This has to do with safe building and some of the codes, making sure we're getting the correct stuff to them with our codes and our ordinance changes, resolutions. Just making sure we all have in the right order for them.
I can help with that. Plus, safe building sentence, the building code, which I think we should look at in our data.
Temples. Wouldn't it be helpful to collaborate with a member of their team?
Yeah, yes. So with the committee.
I'll, I'll join Barb.
Okay. I was gonna say, with the committee, do we have to worry about how many council members?
Probably. So just the two council members in?
Yeah.
And one, one member of safe building team.
Do you need that person's name?
No.
Good.
Any further discussion of that? Set the date for trick or treat night?
Huxley's is on Tuesday, the thirty-first, so I know, I know a lot of times you get straight coordinated the same.
Okay, we should have just said nay.
Why do we do that just so if you're?
No.
Been here almost ten years and it's been.
The same.
I have a trick or treat.
A lot that they do, uh, trunk or treat or something, I think out front, so, or out down in one of the streets over here, yeah.
So they're actually doing it on the thirty-first? That's what you're saying, Tuesday?
I know Ames is Tuesday.
So what do you need from us to give you?
We need better agreement.
I need to create official Halloween trick or treat night on Tuesday, the thirty-first in the city of Cambridge.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, is it six to eight?
What time's it get dark?
By eight.
Seven thirty.
I think it's happening six to eight. I take it as right.
Six to eight.
End of October, so.
Yeah.
Six to eight.
So, get that posted. Facebook and the website, please.
Or is any further discussion on trick or treat now? Moving on to departments. Water and woods. Not from telling it.
They're gonna be here this month.
So.
A water, we picked a couple weeds and.
Any more discussion?
Lot of drobels in the road. They've been drumming the road quite a bit.
That was the case.
Yeah. Some of those were going on in Philip there a couple weeks, but it's like they're getting.
All right, moving on to cemetery and parks.
Cemetery's looking good. Park Board met last Thursday. Actually identifying co-chairs. So when you see him congratulating Jennifer Day and Sarah Kebek are the new co-chairs for the park board. Uh, Randy Howerton is our new secretary. Uh, David Praska will be our motorsports, uh, park representative. And we added one new voting member, uh, Aaron Sinclair. So the park board is full plus two. We have an odd number, seven, which is more than we're authorized, but with seven, I think we can get, we can get things moving along and, and have that oddball vote so that we can pass things. As far as business goes, we're still in the process of researching other similar sized communities with regards to the percentage of their general fund that is dedicated towards parks. I'm a little bit surprised at how mean that is. Not a lot of communities our size have a earmarked amount of money for parks. And in fact, at this point, we've looked at, well, none of them have a park budget that actually pays general funds into projects, parks. So these are all grant-driven, donation-driven, or fundraiser-driven. Still looking at porta-potties, but we're gonna limit it. We're not gonna put a porta-potty down at Josiah Chandler for the season because the season's almost over. But we will work on getting one up here and have it probably open in December at the Trailhead. Uh, looking at some trash services at the motor park.
Mine is the trail closed, thank you.
Say again?
The bike trail closed, thank you.
From Harper Cambridge, that's it. It will be when they do the interstate bridge.
And it'll be a lean time for us.
Yeah.
Um, probably the biggest part right now is working with the city attorneys to create a limited liability corporation with the motors, motorsports entity. And then now we're at a point where we need to look at a lease and get a lease set up so they can lease it from the city. And once we get that established, we can start looking at multi-purpose possibilities. But it, it'd be more wise to get the motorsports part of it down and get it running. They are some motivated people. Holy smokes. And they're like scary motivated. So, uh, it's kind of exciting. Little League ball fields, it sounds like Cambridge Little League is coming back. So when we get into the budget process, we're probably actually gonna have somebody from Little League representing our community. Um, looking at bringing back boys and girls, baseball, softball to the community. Other than that? Pretty easy to achieve. Any questions? All right.
All right, any more discussion on cemetery and parks? Moving on to libraries.
Uh, we had four hundred and ninety-eight checkouts, um, this last month and forty-two users for the online app we have, or Olivia, sorry. Um, we added ninety-four new materials. And, uh, a week ago, I was on my KHOI community radio and each month, Story County libraries are going to be presented. I'll be on again in May, so it's a great way to promote our town and promote the library. And, um, Friday will be, uh, the Story County library ends will get together and that's what we talk about programs and we have to present, we'll present or put together our presentation for um, the Story County supervisors. And so we'll be meeting Monday morning with that. And, um, September twenty-eighth, I'll be at a holiday library directors meeting um, with all directors from across the state. And we'll be talking about how to collaborate with other businesses and community members. And we'll be talking about how to collaborate with other businesses and community members. To promote our libraries and ways that we can promote funding.
You? There any more discussion? Library? Thanks. Moving on to finance economic developments.
Uh, we're on track to get a boost grant, which will go towards our comprehensive plan. So Greg Pickla from Ames would like to meet with us or get our vision for Cambridge, what you see Cambridge doing in the future. From each council member. So if you can think about that, that'd be great. So I think we hear, we'll hear about that in September. We'll start meeting with with experts about how to move ahead to get a comprehensive plan for the city. Yeah, maybe he might come to the next meeting. He just wants your vision, but I. I can't see doing that at a council meeting.
Yeah, can you just have a meeting with him?
Probably.
Those that are available to sit in and discuss where the vision is.
So we'll see. Maybe you can think about what you see as a vision, anybody.
Just send it up to the city hall?
Yeah.
The city hall and attention there. Okay. Any further discussion on finance economic?
We did meet with the land developer guy. What was his name? Jamie Myers. He gave us, he wants the fee or comprehensive plan. I'm not sure what his. Agenda was, but he was talking about who wants their comprehensive plan. He helped us develop it. So I have his packet if anybody wants to see that, so.
Here's one in the office too, if you want to stop in.
In the office? Ready, I'm reading club, that's the hall.
All right, moving on to communications.
Uh, submitted the ideas we talked about for the um.
Litigation.
Hazard mitigation plans, so just waiting to hear back on what the next steps are for them.
Move on to fire.
You wanna introduce your new members?
We got it. Gary?
Derek. What's that?
Yeah, maybe some there.
What's your last name, Derek?
Hallmeyer.
Hallmeyer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that your last name?
Moving on to police, go anything? All right, moving on to discussion items. The Opera House. Um, Cory from F B H is still saying he is still waiting to hear from the state fire marshal. And they'll do it whenever they feel like it.
Is there any way, I mean, does the state fire marshal have a boss? Is there any way we can get somebody to put a boot in his butt?
The state.
I know that, and you're the mayor.
I know, so.
How can I help you put your boot in his butt?
This is starting to cost us a lot of money.
Cory, Cory, the engineer is the one.
Yeah. He's, he's the one that's reaching out to the state fire marshal. He's the one working with the state fire marshal. And we're just on their time, whenever they can fit us in.
I think the city attorney was gonna send the general contractor a letter to.
Yeah, because it's just sitting there empty, costing us money with winter coming.
That's what I heard back from Cory, was after that, after we met with the attorney.
Okay.
And then Cory responded back.
So by all accounts, a boot is being placed. Now I ask you a question. Just the Opera House, pretty referred to the theater?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Okay, same thing.
Didn't know what you're doing.
All right, moving on. Storm sewer improvement update. Uh, we're gonna start. Next month. Yeah, he said that was an error, didn't? Yeah, so there'll be a little work up on uh North Race. And then right over here at Main Street between uh second and third. Be good, be good to plan the update. They're gonna have their event uh this week, this weekend?
I think so. No, I think next weekend.
No, I think it is this weekend. I think it's the sixteen.
So I mean, as long as we're on the topic, when we go to start crafting a lease. That that requires an ordinance change. I mean, do do for us connect you into a lease agreement?
We already, we were already in a lease agreement with the core group. It's just somebody else taking over that. Unless they rename it instead of calling it the Cambridge Offworld Enterprise, which is what it was called.
So you have a copy of the lease?
Yeah, I think Dave Praska has one too. Yeah, he brought one up to me that he had gotten from Anthony.
Then when we do this lease, can we? I mean, I don't, I'm not interested in using the same lease. So I want, I wanna redo it.
That book that's in the office on the off-road park?
Yeah.
There's like a fifteen page printout of what was supposed to be being done with the off-road park.
Okay. Part of what I would like to see happen is that, you know, obviously there could be a lease arrangement. But then there would be a percentage payout from events.
Correct.
So then it's generating revenue for the city. And then I want, I mean, obviously I'm gonna ask that earmark that revenue.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm not going in the wrong direction and I started scaring people.
Are there any further discussions on the off-road park? Moving on to Molly Mae's contract.
So the Molly Mae contract currently what the city does is Molly Mae's comes twice a month, whether we need them or not. Um, and when we do need somebody to come and clean, they don't come extra um to do a cleaning. We have to hire somebody else out. I have spoken, spoken with someone who is interested in taking that cleaning job. Um, and coming when needed, not just automatically every two weeks. Um, but sometimes it could be twice a week if we needed it. Sometimes it might not be for three weeks if it's not being used. So that's just something I think that we need to look at the contract with Molly Mae. Uh, we're not bound into anything yet, but I just wanted to bring it to the.
Molly needs expire at some point then?
It's the same contract that has been with Molly Mae for, I think, since this building started. So there is no timeframe on it. It's open ended anytime we should not want to just give notice of. Just continuing it. They charge two hundred and fifty dollars each time they come. Um, and they're here, there's usually two uh employees come and they're maybe here an hour and a half. It's been really dirty. The max has been two hours.
And so you're talking five hundred dollars a month to keep joint clean, whether it needs to be cleaned or not.
Right.
And this other person.
Who is the, is the person that we call when we need to clean and Molly is not available?
Would it save us money to?
I believe it would, yes.
So do you wanna just go ahead and take action on this right now instead of partnering around with it or can?
I don't know. I think we have to put this out.
Has to be on an agenda item too, yeah. It's just on a discussion item right now.
There it is.
Yes.
Good.
So I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Very further discussion with Molly Mae contract. Moving on to repairs to the buildings from the hail damage. Uh, so another one I reached out um on the Opera House, the roof. Um, the hail punched through the membrane of that brand new roof. And I've reached out to Pro Seal. They're in a litigation with apparently another person. They might have oversprayed a bunch of stuff on their vehicle. And will not contact us back. So I reached out to Cory from F B H and um he said if he'll reach out to him. If they won't respond back to him, then we might have to make the claim. And I'm waiting to hear back when we make a claim to about that. So that we can proceed with somebody else spraying that roof and trying to get it done before.
So the reason that that's on there is because we have received payment. On what the insurance company is estimating our repairs will be. But you have so much of a timeframe. You have within a year of that damage. That if it's gonna cost us more, that we have to get that. So I didn't know who was in charge of going out and finding. The repairs for some of our other buildings that also had hail damage to them. So that's kind of why we brought that to the attention at the meeting tonight.
Can Bill someone work on that?
Is it mostly just roof?
Yeah, a lot of it's sort of.
Opera House, but then there were some to one, some of your buildings too, isn't there? The water plant. Which wouldn't require Pro Seal.
Like that window and stuff that needs to be repaired. Maybe we could find somebody to do a couple. Couple estimates on that. Get a couple estimates for me, thank you. All right. Moving on. Uh, moving on, city council rules and procedures. So we kinda went over this a little bit last month.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you please?
Absolutely.
This young gentleman thinks he's related to me. He's been nothing but polite and respectful. Coming in late. He had something on his mind. You shut him down. Be entertained.
Oh, I was gonna give it a mention. I didn't know the way that you were. This busy man and hell of a busy man. Uh, may I?
You gotta ask him.
So you know how this works. You let one do it and everybody comes.
The timing is kind of funny too, as we're about to read that.
Get here, I tried next time. Okay. So I don't know the core of how it works. I have never really. Yeah, I'll come at some point.
Live and learn.
I'm pretty busy, D W.
Point well noted.
All right.
I tried, kid.
Um, yeah, so the rules of procedure, um, it's pretty much you get to, when we open up to public comment, that's when you get to talk. Um, you know, tell us what's on your mind, what's going on, what you think might need to be changed. So on so forth. After that, it's, it's. The councils work second. And and you guys are more welcome to leave or stay or whatever, but there's no. Interruptions, no questionings. You got a question about something, grab one of them afterwards. Chew on their ear. Um, whatever they can present it.
Or email. Are on the city page.
You can put your name on it for. City council. So.
So can I ask a question about that?
So I just told him he couldn't do it.
Tonight, sir, a question, because she said question, not concern.
Yeah, the city council rules and procedures, city attorney sent us a list of how we should. Run the meetings. So we're considering how to do it, if we should adopt it. But.
A little more order.
Yeah, it's like texting pages we saw that I emailed.
Yeah, we did see them.
Oh, and did I see it?
It makes a good point. Every city has a choice of how they run their. Their uh meetings, so.
And that's for efficiency.
Yeah, not efficiency, but I mean, we're city government. We're running a city. So it needs to have order and be professional. And all of them have that public comment beginning and then after that it's business, so. But the city attorney sent these out, so we just, I had it on the discussion items just so we can, I don't know, do we wanna? Some point put it on the agenda to adopt. We need to edit this. Cause that might be a work session.
Right.
Go through and work it out. Maybe with something else, we'll have another meeting session, but this is a word one. And that's it.
All right, any, any further discussion there city rules? I am good with comments. Council have any comments?
Yeah, I do. We started the school year with two bus stops in Cambridge. Have you ever done that before? We have well over four hundred thirty-five kids in the building. We've never had that many young people in that building. Um, we're having a great start to the school year. The new leadership is doing magnificently. Um, and we are probably gonna look into developing a third bus stop in town here for the next season. And the Lutherans and the Methodist are making Cambridge proud because they're, we're the only community which is up to our bus riders. So it's kind of cool, very cool, if you ask me. That's all, sir.
Any other comments?
Make a motion later.
Second.
All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Eyes have it.